Hello, Mr. BT.
Hi Becky.
I'm just wolfing down dinner. I'll be back in a few minutes.
Okay. Well, this is an interesting state of affairs.
What's that? Quiet?
We have all our members and a total of nine participants. I'm not sure the Gail. Is that, that's Gail. Hi, Gail.
Good evening.
Okay, so I'm going to call the meeting of the Manchester Board of Selectment to order at 6:30 PM on Monday. Didn't turn my calendar, but I know it's November 1st anyway. And this meeting is being recorded. Just make sure that it's being recorded properly. Okay. Meeting's being recorded and that recording will be available a couple of days after the meeting on our website. In terms of the well, actually, let's go to public input first. Any items that are not on tonight's agenda? So anyone want to raise an issue that's not on the agenda for tonight?
Jeff, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um. I have been asked whether there's anything that the selectmen can or should do to reduce the chances of another electrical outlet outage like the one on Wednesday. Specifically encouraging National Grid to develop a routing plan that would allow to route around failed electrical lines.
Okay, that's something that we can certainly, that we certainly do need to take up. Since many of the people who are on this meeting that I can see are people who were affected by that outage. And there were, in fact, another outage after the Maine nor'easter had passed out of town for a couple hours, for a couple hours two days later. And there was no warning that that was a planned outage. I don't believe that it was. They did get electricity back up and running within an hour and 45 minutes, but these, these issues with outages seem to be a regular occurrence with storms. So I agree, we will take this up as a board at our next meeting and in between time, we'll develop a plan for talking to National Grid.
Jeff, may I add to that?
Sure.
Additionally, I think there were some hiccups regarding the the phone lines at down at Town Hall, including the police station. Maybe Todd can talk to that, but, but we, if we can put that on on the agenda as well.
Okay.
Please.
I don't want to go, I don't want to go into discussing that right now because that's not an item that's on our agenda. But we will, we will put that on the agenda for our meeting on the 15th.
Thank you.
Okay. The chairman's report. Tomorrow, we have a special primary election that will be held in that election will be held at the Manchester Essex Middle High School in, I believe, the cafeteria area. So please make sure that you vote in that election. That's the primary and I believe that the final election for that seat, which is the representative seat that Brad Hill has held, from which he resigned when he was appointed to the gaming commission, will be held on November 30th. So November 2nd tomorrow is the primary, November 30th is the final election. The other item that I wanted to bring up in the chairman's report was a call for help from the Sustainability Committee who recently sustained a resignation of one of the members, which leaves them with four members, which is their quorum. So if any one of their four members is unable to make a meeting, they cannot have the meeting because they don't have a core. We are interviewing a candidate tonight for sustainability. And my recommendation to the board for tonight would be if that candidate is acceptable to the board that we proceed to confirm that candidate tonight, which is not our usual procedure. Okay, those things having been said, we can move to the first item on our agenda. Can we? Yes, which is the appointments and interviews for Cultural Council. The appointment of Christine Monkholm, who was interviewed at our meeting on October 4th. Is there a nomination? Could I get a motion to
Move the most to nominate Christina, Kristi, Christian Monkholm, Chris to the Manchester Cultural Council.
Second. To fulfill this, the, the till June 22.
Right, to fill, to fill a term that expires in June 22. And the second was John Round.
Yep.
Is there any discussion of this nomination? Okay, so let's have a roll call booked. Ms. Jakes.
Yes, and thank you very much.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Ballin.
Yes.
And Mr. Round.
Yes, sir.
Chair votes yes. So Chris, thank you very much for stepping forward and I know from the back and forth that you and I have had with the chair of the with the chair of the cultural council that this is this is going to be a good fit, and it looks like you've got the approval to go ahead and join them at their next meeting. Second item under appointments is an interview for the Sustainability Committee of Amy Lee Connors. And I'm looking and I'm seeing one unidentified. When identified person is that Amy Lee? Amy? Oh. No. So Amy's not here, and this is the second interview that we've missed with her. Which concerns me. Particularly in the light of what I just mentioned about the Sustainability Committee looking for volunteers. So I would strongly urge to people who are on this call to suggest to friends or to step forward themselves to consider participation in the Sustainability Committee. I would also like to ask Greg. And perhaps Eli. The Sustainability Committee has seven members. That's two more members than the Board of Selectment, which makes their quorum challenging to meet. Is there a reason why that committee is so large? As a committee?
When it was originally formed, I believe that they they had a large collection of people who are interested. They had a number of initiatives that they wanted to pursue. It was relatively easy to find people who wanted to work on that committee. A bit of work to do, so we made the committee larger than small.
Okay. I wonder if we should consider. We should probably talk to Allison about this. As the chair. Wonder if we would consider changing committee membership to this committee because even the position that Ms. Connors was going to interview for was only through six twenty two because of the resignation of another member. So I will follow up with Allison on that and I don't believe.
Someone to do that. I'm sorry. Are you looking for someone to do that?
Are you looking to do that?
I will do that.
Okay, I will accept. The if we were to make such a change, that's not something that would have to go before time maybe because this is a decision of the board, correct? Correct. Okay. So I'd like her to consider that and it's not because their work is any less important, but they do need a working membership to proceed. So.
Jeff?
Yes.
Is there a timeframe in which you'd like me to do? Is this for the next meeting?
I I think that given her email to me on Friday, which was a cry for help. And the need for the need for volunteers for that committee. I that I'd like to try and get this done quickly. I don't want to do it rashly. If she feels if she feels that the need is there for seven members, then we just need to figure out how to market it better for volunteers.
Okay, and I have one more question about that, if I might.
Sure.
And it's just regarding Amy, and I just wonder if there was a disconnect anywhere. And perhaps just wondering if there was any disconnect in terms of her knowing that she was supposed to be on again today.
Correct.
Yeah, we'll follow up. I know that there was communication with her last week and she said that she was available. But we'll follow up to see if if that's that's through her her hands or if she was waiting for you know, the zoom link or whatever, but we'll follow up to see if there was a glitch there.
Okay.
Jeff, her phone number is on the application. We could call her right now.
I'd rather not because we have about two minutes left in our agenda for the interview and
It's a little tight.
Is the board willing to entertain a third scheduling with her? I'm concerned about her meeting. Not being able to meet two scheduled interviews so far. And what that means about her participation in the committee.
I'd I'd be inclined to give her the benefit of the doubt and find out if there's anything that any extenuating circumstances.
Okay. Like so. So if you could follow up on that for us, Greg and and we get to reschedule her for the fifteenth. All right. It's now six forty four thirty, which is pretty close to starting our next agenda item at six forty five. There it goes. So our next agenda item is the fall time meeting preparation and review. And I would turn this over to Greg for setting it up. Go ahead.
So we should just basically walk through the eight different articles and decide who is making the motions for those articles and discuss any informational needs that we have to get out to the public and or one of you, if you're going to be the main speaker for that article typically. Typically, you you most you make the motion for most articles, but in this case, a lot of these articles are being advocated, you know, by particular committee, so they may be the ones who are were making the motion and being the primary speakers. So I think we should just review each each article and walk through who will be making the motions and and doing the lead lead off in terms of explaining them.
Okay. So Article One is the article to this is the Tobacco Road article. Yes.
I I have I have a concern with this where the question was brought up that should we have been involved when it was first brought to Hamilton Concom as the landowners? And I'm concerned that and this we've just learned about, but I am concerned with bringing this forward if that's something that should have been done.
So council is still reviewing that issue. They may, as the easement holder, have the right to proceed. But if indeed, as the landowner, we are, we should have signed off on that, and that is something that Hamilton would have to redo. It doesn't preclude you know, proving the concept. And it's a administrative defect potentially in the application to the Concom, which can be corrected by, in essence, resubmitting and and having that hearing redone.
It concerns me that that if this is something that we should have been made aware of, that rather than it simply being something procedural, it 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 didn't follow proper procedure and that that concerns me a little bit. That's my two cents on that one.
Okay, but we were notified about the intent of this article prior to the annual town meeting. And this was, in fact, supposed to be scheduled for the annual town meeting and had to be withdrawn because of a lack of a planning board meeting on our side.
Through no fault of the planning board, though. That was not the planning board's fault.
Well, the fact of the matter is that the planning board didn't hold their meeting and we had to withdraw the article and pass it over.
So there's there's no requirement for sequentially, you know, doing things in a certain order. So it's up to the towns to decide which order you take. You could do the vote. This article would be first before any other permitting had begun or not. It's there's no prescribed sequence under which a proposal like this has to go.
Jeff?
Excuse me?
Ma'am, make a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
This was vetted across multiple meetings. There are multiple presentations over a very extended period of time. We actually had a second presentation by the people, the engineers, so that we could give the public clear upfront notification about what was being proposed, and we had had a previous presentation on this. I think months before that in in painstaking detail. As far as I'm concerned, this has been vetted by this board multiple times, and we have supported it along the way at every at every step of the way. And I will volunteer to make comments on this article.
Okay, to Becky's concerns, I believe that this would be something that needs to be done on time. Those concerns could be brought up on town meeting floor, and we would need to answer those on town meeting floor. Is there any objection to Eli presenting this article? Okay, so.
Jeff?
Yes. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, sir. If Eli is going to be the speaker, he should probably also be the mover.
Got it.
And and on the motion, I have a couple of of late breaking developments to talk about. I just received this morning the final report and recommendation of the planning board, which they have happily made. And included in it is a recommendation that the town require the town of Hamilton to submit to the town of Manchester for approval, a stormwater management plan. My my suggestion would be that if the board is in agreement with that as something that the town of Manchester would want to have, that we incorporate that into Eli's main motion.
I think since that's coming out of our planning board, that's not inconsistent with the intent of the article as it as it was approved, as this warrant was approved last time. And so I would I would follow that recommendation. I would take a motion to do that.
Yeah, and I I certainly within the scope, so I don't think there's a problem there.
Thank you.
The the other issue, which I just learned about this afternoon, a resident had called me to talk about proposing an additional change. And that is, as it's currently worded, the the subsection D of the article concludes by saying and to amend the conservation restriction encumbering said property. And this individual raised a concern that that was open ended, that it could allow for not only an amendment to the conservation restriction providing for the relocation of the road, but could also allow for amendments that relaxed the terms of the conservation restriction. I assured the resident that I didn't think that was anyone's intention. Nevertheless, she thought it would be important to add language, making that clear. Since that is really a conservation issue, I was able to talk with Steve Gang about it of the Conservation Commission this afternoon, and he agreed that he thought such language would also be appropriate. So I don't have exact language to propose tonight, but it would be something along the lines of to amend the conservation restriction encumbering said property to provide for relocation of the road without any changes to the substantive terms of the conservation restriction. My thought would be that Greg and I work with town councils to develop the specific language of the motion on both that issue and the stormwater management plan. But just giving you a heads up that I think those two things should be there and will probably avoid having to take amendments to the motion from the floor.
Okay. The you don't think the language that precedes the and to amend the conservation restriction is sufficient in that regard? Which is to authorize the change and use transfer and conveyance of easements in said portions of the town owned property.
No, no, I don't. I don't think so.
We couldn't say something to the effect of to amend the concentration conservation restriction encumbering said property to accomplish that.
I I think it needs to be more specific than that, but I would ultimately defer to town council.
Okay. All right, so.
And I that also I think would be within the scope.
Certainly, because it clarifies. And it clarifies with this general language by replacing it with specific language. So I assume that we need to do this with two motions to amend this article in the ways that have been described.
No, we we can't. We we we're never able to amend the article. What we do, what we actually vote on at town meeting is a motion made under the article. And so we can we can incorporate these ideas
Into the language of the motion.
Into the main motion, right?
Okay. Okay. Okay, fine. You go to that, Eli?
Yes, that same time.
All right, so Eli and Alan will be working with town council to get that and Greg to get that motion written in such a way that we incorporate both the stormwater management plan and more specific language regarding the amendments to the conservation restriction.
Yes. And af- after we have the language, Eli, if you would like to make the motion, I'm happy to defer to you. If you would like me to make it for you, as I often do, I'm happy to do that as well.
Happy for you to make the motion. It seems very efficient to me.
Okay, happy to do it. We need to. We need to know who the second is.
And and Harrison.
Thank you.
Okay, Article Two, we're going to have to move here because there's a lot of articles and we have very little time allocated for this. This is the transfer of a hundred thousand dollars or a related sum for the engineering plans and cost estimates for developing a multipurpose athletic field on the old burnt up on Pine Street.
So under this.
So under this. Yeah, so under this article. The community preservation committee is recommending that forty six thousand one hundred comes from. Their funds. And the balance would come from. The free cash account, the fund balance, the town's fund balance.
Okay.
And so that would be incorporated in the motion. That is made here. I believe that. Parks and Rec Committee is willing to to make this motion.
Okay.
Quick question, if I may, I guess Greg, you sent out a a cost estimate. For the project and I assume that is exclusive of this hundred thousand we're speaking about.
Cost estimate for for construction?
Yes.
That would be developed as part of that.
That's right. That that that's a follow on to this this project. Okay, just making sure.
This this is to create bid documents for that project.
Correct.
Okay.
And we need it, we need a seconder. Is one of the selectmen want to second?
I'll second that.
So Parks, Parks and Rec will make the main motion and and John Reynolds second.
Jeffrey, this is Sarah Melish.
Yes, Sarah Melish.
The finance committee has not made recommendation on this article yet. Voting on Wednesday. If we do not approve it, we would like to make a statement.
Okay.
I have no idea what's gonna happen.
Okay, Sarah, I've noted that. Will you let me know whether you are gonna make a statement?
I will, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and Christine, you have your hand up as well.
I did. It was actually for the first article.
Okay, does it have to do with the procedures that we're talking about or to the substance of the article?
It does, actually.
Alright, well, those are two different things. We're talking about the procedures of of moving and speaking on the articles. And if it's to the substance of the article, I I would not entertain that tonight.
So you made a comment that the planning board didn't meet and that's why it wasn't in the spring. Hearing, and that was actually untrue. So I want that clarified.
Actually, actually, the planning board had not met and made a recommendation prior to town meeting.
You said it was because the planning board did not meet or chose not to meet.
That's the reason why it was passed over.
But there wasn't a choice. There wasn't time. There wasn't notice.
No, I'm not, I'm not gonna get into an argument with you about it. Those are the facts of the matter. The planning board didn't meet, so we had to pass over.
Okay, so then I do have a question. There was notice of tree removal on this property. The notice was dated on October first. The planning board received this notice three weeks later. And the planning board never had a chance to comment on this. Could you answer for me how many trees will be removed for this project?
A consultant answered that question during the selectman's hearing. He said a couple dozen large trees or so. He hasn't done an exact count. But of course, the old road will revert back to forest and therefore there'll be a typical one to one replacement of any trees cut down.
So that replacement is not noted in any documents anywhere?
It was noted in the presentation that the engineer gave at the selectman's hearing.
So I've actually been very diligent about attending each of these meetings and the presentation, Mr. Fetterfield, changes from meeting to meeting. So if there's not a document that notes these, I'm really concerned that we keep just pushing this through.
And there's, there's no pushing through. I'm sorry. I it is just an unfair comment.
Alright, this is, this is, this is beyond the scope of tonight's agenda. Because you're you're raising issues about the details of. How this article has been has been written. And the article stands as it does, with the exception of the stormwater management plan and. The issues related to the conservation restriction. So.
There were concerns brought up and I'm commenting on those.
That's to the substance of the article and that has to go to town meeting. We can't go, we can't argue the article tonight.
So is the notice of intent and the conservation restrictions, are they are they proper? Have you had an offer or an answer from town council? So they're gonna go forward to town council, town.
Christina, I don't wanna continue this conversation any longer. We just said that we were gonna go to town council regarding the conservation restriction. So we don't have the the final opinion of town council about how to write the language for the conservation re- restriction.
That wasn't the question I that was brought up initially from Mr. Fetterfield.
Do you have a question about the procedure of? Are. Moving and speaking to this article?
My question is, is the notice of intent proper?
You can raise that at town meeting. Okay. Let's move on. Article three is.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Under article two is someone from the Board of Selectmen. Does someone from the Board of Selectmen want to speak?
Anyone on the board, anyone on the board want to speak to this article?
I think it would be helpful to have some comment from the board.
Okay, I I Alan.
I will do that.
You're gonna, you're gonna do that, Jeff? Okay.
I will do that because I was involved in in the original discussions that led to this article.
Thank you.
Okay, article three. This is regarding the appropriation of money for harbor vast or vessel. And replacement boat for the existing vessel that.
I'll I'll move that.
Okay.
I'll be glad to second.
And speaking to that article?
Happy to.
Okay. Okay. Article four. Uh, this is the renumbering changes in the zoning bylaw. Now, I assume that the planning board is gonna present this article.
That that's right. I I've talked with Ron, Master Giacomo. I would would assume they would move it. Someone from the planning board will speak to it. They haven't identified who that will be yet.
Okay, so somebody from the Board of Selectmen want to second this article?
I will.
Okay, and. Do we need anybody from the Board of Selectmen to speak to this article, Alan?
I don't think it's necessary. Certainly, if if someone would like to, that's fine.
Okay. I think that this one. Uh, we could probably have planning board take care of the speaking to this article. And we might want to consider. Possibly speaking to article five. So let's take up article. Any other questions about article four?
Just just a quick point. I I will limit the discussion of this to renumbering only. We won't have a discussion of any of the substance of those sections.
Okay. Alright, article five is the second zoning bylaw change to delete. I think it's seven sections. Yes. Of the zoning bylaw. This is gonna be moved by the planning board as well.
Yes.
And I assume that they're gonna speak to that?
Yes.
Okay, and someone from the Board of Selectmen to second it?
I'm happy to do that.
Okay, Becky, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say yes to you on this and then. We'll have other members involved in other articles, but you've been involved with the planning board for. Following these articles as well. Do we need to speak to this article, Al?
I you you said you might want to. It's up to you, I think.
Becky, do you, do you have any comments that you want to make to this article or do you want to just allow the planning board to say that?
No, I think the planning board will be. The best, and I don't think I need to say anything.
Okay, fine.
I I think this one will be Sarah Creighton or Chris Olney, but I don't know which one.
Okay. Articles, anything else on article five? Article six. Is a non bonding endorsement of the development concept of the Manchester Housing Authority. And the Affordable Housing Trust regarding the site on Pleasant Street. To develop those sites along with the housing authority sites at loading place. The Plains Newport Park and. This also includes foregoing. A non binding endorsement to forego summer all revenue from the possible sale lease of the Pleasant Street site to a future developer. To keep acquisition costs down. Help to bring a developer in. So. Is the Affordable Housing Trust gonna be presenting this or are we?
I would be happy to do that. Something for you to decide.
Sarah, I see your hand. Give me one second. Members of the Board of Selectmen, are you wanting to speak to this article? Or do you want Affordable Housing Trust to do it?
I would be inclined to have the. Affordable Housing Trust and Housing Authority speak to this.
Likewise.
Okay, I see a nod of Eli. You gotta get that nod down a little bit, Eli, or I'm gonna pick up on it.
I I I think it would be useful for the voters to hear from the Board of Selectmen as well as the trust and the Housing Authority.
Okay.
I'd be willing to speak if if that's okay. I'll second and speak.
You'll second and speak? Okay. Sarah.
Yeah, so again. The finance committee has not yet taken a vote on this article. We'll do it on Wednesday. And I think regardless of which way we come out, we would like to speak to the article.
Sarah, would you let me know if if you if you want to be the speaker or someone else?
I will. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you. Alan, do you see this as as two separate motions, A and B? No, no, I don't. Do you think we, do you think we should? I I apologize for my border Terry or barking in the background. Pardon me?
I said, they're so cute. They get automatic bye.
Well, thank you. He's usually not yappy like that. I don't know what's got his attention.
He wants to speak to the article. I I don't think that these two things can be uncoupled. In the presentation that the. Affordable Housing Trust did. With the Housing Authority this summer. At. The cafeteria at the high school. They made it really clear that this. That that this is an integrated approach to. Try and. Provide a developer who would come in and work on. The existing properties. With the possibility of having a. Property that that they were developing that was market. So. That's, that's my understanding from the presentation that was done this summer.
That's mine as well. I certainly have the authority to divide the question. I need to, I need to do a little checking to see whether the meeting can vote to divide the question. I I could imagine someone might be in favor of the concept, but not in favor of. Some reduced sale of the land. Yeah, I will, I will have an answer to that soon. But I I suffice it to say for tonight that I will not divide the question.
The language of the article as it stands now says that the development cost could be limited or reduced. It doesn't say it's a free base. So that would still be open to. Open to further negotiation by the Affordable Housing Trust and Housing Authority and the developer.
Well, and it and it's non binding, so it doesn't, it doesn't commit anyone to foregoing anything.
Yes, exactly. Okay. Sheila Hill, is your question related to? The procedural issues that we're talking about or is it related to the substance of the article?
Proceed procedural issues, and it's just a one quick question.
Okay, go ahead.
Why is it necessary for voters to? Be involved in the approval of this article if you have approved it and the FinCom has approved it?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Our approval. Is. That we support the article coming to town meeting floor. For a non binding vote.
Why is it necessary for the article to come to town meeting floor in that case?
It's a request of. The. Housing Authority and. The Affordable Housing Trust.
No, I I understand that, but the.
As it was presented this summer and I feel a little bit like I'm getting onto shaky ground trying to. Represent the intent of the Affordable Housing Trust, but as it was presented at this summer's public hearing. That their reason for doing this is to say. To a developer, we have support in the town for moving with this project.
I understand that. I think you have represented that accurately.
Thank you.
But I question whether. The role of voters, which is essentially a legislative role. To be an informed voters, a set of informed voters can vote on this. As informed voters because it is a terribly complex. Proposal. And I think it's it's really an abuse of the legislative responsibilities. Of voters to ask them to approve it. You can approve it. FinCom can approve it. I don't see that voters need to approve it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Sarah Malish?
Yes, as a member of the FinCom and the FinCom rep on the Manchester Affordable Housing Trust, they went out to RFP in 2018 and received no responses, and the feeling was they needed some type of commitment from the town. There would be town-owned property that was available to make the project financially feasible. It doesn't have to be DBW, but it needs to be some type of land available to make it financially feasible, and that's why it's before the town, because they can't go out to RFP without it.
Or that they feel that it would be fruitless to go out to RFP without it?
Right, they feel there'd be no response, again.
Okay, I, I just, I'm, I'm concerned about the language of can't.
Sorry, okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Sarah. Are we set with Article Six? Article Seven. See if the town will These are the two, these are the two citizens petitions, and the first one is regarding the multiple access driveway, and the second one is in regard to sewer connections. We would not be providing speakers on this, I don't know, so.
We would not?
Excuse me, we would not be providing someone who would be moving the articles, this, this article is being moved by SEMA. So speakers for these two articles. Separate speakers, I think.
What's the status of Article Seven at this point?
Status, legal status? What are you asking about status?
Is it the case that, what, what is the motion going to be made? Is it going to be made? Is it going to be passed over? What's the status of the article?
My, my understanding is that SEMA's board has not made a decision yet.
I, I don't think, Eli, in terms of these two articles, that we can assume any status until we're on town meeting floor. All right.
I, I think we may know sooner than that. Perhaps by Wednesday. But I think, I think for purposes of this meeting, the board should probably assume that there will be motion, affirmative motions made under both seven and eight, so you should plan accordingly.
Okay, so is there anybody from the Board of Selectmen who wishes to speak to Article Seven regarding secondary access?
In terms of the stance of the Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
I think we need to, and if nobody else will, I will.
Jeff?
Yes, John?
Does that mean that the Board of Selectmen has to take a position, or should take a position on each of these articles in order to speak to them?
Yes, the Board of Selectmen does need to
You know, collectively as a group.
And we're not going to do that tonight.
Okay.
But if, if we can, if we can at least have a speaker ready to represent the board, that would be within the scope of our agenda tonight.
I will do that.
Okay.
So you want to hold a, you want to hold a special meeting to determine the board's position?
Oh, God, yeah, because our next meeting is not until after the 13th.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
No, I'd rather not do that, but I'm also concerned that in terms of our agenda tonight, that we are long past where we should be. Does somebody want to open the discussion about this?
I think this article is inappropriate, overly restrictive, and ineffective at its intended goal, and I suggest that we reject it. May I interject here in that it's, we're not, we didn't we just said preparation and review, we didn't state in the agenda that we would actually be discussing.
I think that, I think it falls under the purview of review.
So what you could do is you recommend the same as the planning board. If you are so inclined.
Or we can make a recommendation on town meeting floor?
We still would have to discuss.
So following the recommendation of the planning board.
I'm comfortable with that.
Obviates the need for another meeting.
Just, just so you know, the planning board is recommending a negative vote on both of these articles.
How exactly is the person speaking to this article going to express the position of the Board of Selectmen if we don't discuss it?
Yep.
My concern is that there are questions still, my understanding anyway, is that there are questions still outstanding with town council regarding both of these articles. Is that accurate?
No, I don't think that is accurate. I think Article Seven, I mean, town council feels that a lot of Article Seven is already handled within our subdivision regulations. That it, it's more for the non-subdivision projects that fall under the zoning, so you do capture something new there. The, the planning board's feeling was that this would have some potentially unintended consequences on, on projects. For example, you know, what if, what if I'm the 51st development on a dead-end street that's quite long? Does that mean I can't build a house on my lot? Because I, it says no more than 50, 50 dwelling units on something that's over 500 feet long. Or if a new cluster development is being proposed, and the reason why it's being proposed is to, to preserve some highly sensitive lands. This would, in essence, force the developer to put in a second row potentially through that sensitive environmental land. So those were a couple of examples that the planning board highlighted as unintended consequences of, of the proposal. So they would recommend that further, further work is needed to make sure that those unintended consequences don't occur.
And I think simply I would say the same thing, just, just say that the Board of Selectmen supports the recommendation of the planning board because, et cetera. Does that make sense?
It does, but I, I think to my mind that we should be going just a little bit further. And I think it's rather notable that we have been going through a considerable effort regarding the zoning bylaw recodification. And we've gone to great lengths to stage the work on that over an extended period of time to gather a significant public input through public forums and public meetings of the planning board. And this bylaw, proposed by law change, and the subsequent one have had, have not had the benefit of that. The public has not had an opportunity, never did have an opportunity to review and comment on this publicly as part of this larger, the context, larger recodification effort, and this has been a major effort that the town has been undertaking for many, many months, a very public effort. And these have not been part of it.
I nominate Eli to speak to this. If he's willing.
I'm willing. You would be putting up with that type of language for me.
I, I didn't hear anything objectionable in that language, Eli.
Nor did I.
Any other comments from the Board of Selectmen? So Eli's comments arch over both Article Seven and Article Eight. That the lack of public review, public meeting review of these changes in our bylaws is inconsistent with other planning in the town related to the substance of these articles. Related to, or, or similar to the, the substance of these articles. Or any bylaw for that matter.
And significant potential for unintended consequences.
Jeff, I will say that originally I was going to suggest and, and ask Alan if we should consider speaking to both Article Seven and Eight at the same time with one speaker.
Well, I don't, I don't want to open the full discussion up to discussing both at the same time because they're really very different, and I think the discussion will then just become confusing. I think, I, I think though, since your recommendations are not so much substantive as procedural in terms of the public process that has been going on that these, these articles were not part of, I think I'd be willing to let the, the selectman representative discuss both, but not open the discussion on the floor.
If I, if I could make a suggestion to address that issue, Alan?
Yep.
Eli, if you're willing to speak to Article Seven, and we could have either Becky speak to Eight, or you speak to Eight as well, but keep them separate totally. I, I, I understand the concerns about confounding the discussion of these two articles and their substance. And even though there's similar concerns that Eli is raising, which I certainly understand and support. So if we could move you into Article Seven, and maybe a much briefer response to Article Eight saying the same issues that I mentioned about Article Seven, hold here.
That, that'll make things simpler for me in terms of procedure.
Does that work for you, Eli?
Sure.
And, and the recommendation of the board on, on both is to recommend the advice of the planning board?
Is the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen to follow the advice of the planning board?
I think you probably need to vote that.
I move that we, on Article Seven and Article Eight, we follow the recommendation of the planning board.
Second.
I, I actually would like to just offer a slight change in that, that we do that as two separate votes for two separate articles, because the recommendations may be different. Not, not that, not that they're gonna that, that the content of their recommendations and the reasoning for their recommendations may be different, so I think it's important that we separate those two on our end as well.
And if I can make another friendly amendment to recommend, as the planning board did, to not approve. I just want to state that in there.
Jeff, if I may make a comment here, so for each of these articles.
Wait a minute, we need to get our motion straight, and then we can comment.
May I withdraw my motion?
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to follow the recommendation of the, follow the recommendation to not approve of the planning board on Article Seven.
Second.
Discussion, go ahead, John.
Yeah, so my impression is that there are different reasons for both Seven and for Eight as to why the planning board has rejected it, but I, I get the sense that not only be, not only are those issues that the planning board had exist, but as Eli said, they really haven't been vetted in a public way in terms of the zoning process. So there hasn't been a vetting of these, these issues as well. So it's premature to kind of vote on these when the public at large has not looked at all of these issues or had the opportunity to do that. The planning board within its group has got its opinions here, and that's fine.
John, excuse me, that's not true.
That's not true?
That's not accurate. The, the planning board, as it's required to do by Chapter Forty, Section Five A, held a hearing on both of these articles. It was a public hearing.
Okay.
So, so the legal public process that's required has been followed, and they, they voted after that hearing to recommend a negative vote on both.
Okay, so it, it has gone before the public and it has had public comment through those meetings.
Yes.
Okay. Wasn't clear to me.
To be clear, that was one meeting within the past month. With no previous public exposure.
Oh, that's, that's quite correct, and it hasn't been part of the much longer ongoing process of recodification. I didn't mean to imply that it had been. But the, the, the technical legal requirement of the Zoning Enabling Act was met.
Okay. We have a recommendation, a motion, and a second to follow the recommendation of the planning board to not approve this article, Article Seven. Any other comments or discussion of that article, that motion? All right, I'm gonna call for Becky, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna call, roll call vote, Ann Harrison.
Yes.
Eli Bowling.
Yes.
John Round.
Yes.
Ricky Jakes.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Do I have a motion on Article Eight?
Yes, Jeff, same motion to follow the recommendation of the planning board.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, ready to vote? Roll call vote, Mr. Bowling.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Jakes.
Yes.
Mr. Round.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes.
Okay.
What's that?
Who is speaking on eight?
Eli Bowling.
Is that acceptable, Eli? Would you rather have some?
I'll do it. I'll do it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about the warrant? In town meeting. All right. That brings us up to seven o'clock. So we're forty-five minutes behind and we, our next agenda item is traffic calming policy. To wit, that Chuck Damm submitted a draft of the traffic calming policy with some small revisions done to it. And Greg, do you have any comments on this draft?
Well, again, at your last meeting, there's, was favorably received by you and others. Um, again, some, some tweaking has been done, but I think you wanted to continue to review and to, um, make sure that, uh, again, we're, we're not having unintended consequences. And, um, and see how, um, see how you think it might work in, in practice. I do put the caution out there that, um, I think we could be flooded by a lot of requests initially. And that, you know, we, we won't be able to respond to everybody at the same time. Um, this is designed to be data driven. So we want to do traffic data collection as, as after receiving, uh, an inquiry for some improvement or some modification. So walking through this process will not be instantaneous. It will take some time. It's, it's, that's part of the, the design of the policy is to be methodical. So I just don't want to, um, raise expectations unnecessarily that if, if you do pass this policy, that there will be instant gratification on the ground. Having said that, I think, I think the policy makes a lot of sense and is worth pursuing. And I appreciate both Chuck and Todd's efforts in putting, um, thinking through some of these issues.
Jeff?
Yes, Eli.
So I, as far as the instant gratification and the potential flood of requests is concerned, uh, I guess I can appreciate the possibility of the flood of, uh, potential flood of requests. But it seems to me like the policy itself lays out a fairly deliberative process. And I can't imagine anybody reading this policy expecting to see instant gratification of any sort. It's, it's something which is clearly intended to be a careful deliberative process. As far as management of a large number of requests, you know, as, as that's a something we have to prioritize them. Well, we could divide and prioritize them when I first come for service or prioritize them on a, um, uh, impact basis, how many people they would, they would, um, impact. Or we can defer that, um, until later to see what comes in.
There's also a prioritization in the inherent in the, in the uh, plan that's where there's a certain amount of, of points that you get for various things. And, you know, at any given time, we should take the high point count.
Yep. I think that's a really good point, yeah. About the points.
Uh, Jeff. Yeah.
Go ahead, John.
Greg, Greg, um, I, I think your, your comments are, are, are fair with regard to, we don't know if you're going to get uh, one, one inquiry per year or ten. And you could put some sort of a disclaimer or comment at the end that things will be taken, you know. I wouldn't say taken as they come because we will prioritize things, but people should be aware that things take, take time. Uh, despite Eli's comments, uh, there are all kinds of people out there and there are people that will look at this and say, oh, what's this take? Three weeks? Fine. So I, I think that, uh, you, you maybe put some sort of a comment at the end that says it, it may take, uh, depending upon what comes in. It may take some time to get to them. Just so people are aware.
I, I think since this is a data-driven tool, that I think we could try and adopt language that addresses that issue on, that John just raised on using the process of of points as Anne raised it. So if, if, uh, the next project to be the next traffic calming situation, the problem that was to be addressed is coming up on, on the priority list and a project comes in that has can points more. It would seem to me that we would be able to put that kind of language in. So that we're dealing with things that are the highest priority. Does that work in terms of your understanding of this policy, Chuck?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, uh, I could come up with a disclaimer if, uh, you know, before the next meeting or whenever you guys want.
I, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think.
Could be an issue.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it as a disclaimer. I would say prioritization of projects. Yeah, that needs to be.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and we're limited by not only, not only people and time, but also equipment, I assume. It's not like we've got lots of these units that do the various measurements.
Absolutely.
And to some extent in terms of mitigation to time of year. Okay, any other comments on the policy tonight? Okay, so, um, we will consider this to be the first reading of this policy. And, um, the second reading will be on the fifteenth. All right. Thank you, Chuck, uh, for providing this very clear document. And being amenable to our tweaking. All right. Our next item on the agenda is the local rapid recovery plan, next steps. Greg, you want to tee this one up, please?
Or so, if you recall, um, both Essex and Manchester teamed up to participate in the local rapid recovery program. Um, this was providing, uh, the state providing consulting services to help businesses regain their footing um, as they recover from the pandemic and try to build back their business and, and have customers return to, um, to patronize their stores and restaurants. Um, so the process has unfolded over the summer. A working team from both communities, working with the consultants, identified, um, long list of, of possibilities for improvements and different efforts that could help in bolstering, uh, the business community in both communities. And in the end came up with a series of, um, nine recommendations, uh, eight that are pertinent to, to Manchester. And at this stage, needing to decide which of those eight um, are best to try to advance to, uh, to the next stage, which would be funding and implementation. So we don't need to make that decision tonight for the choosing two or three of the eight. Um, but I did want to get them before you so that you can be thinking about them. Um, we are collecting, I say we, Sue Brown and, and the committee are trying to collect some additional of input from the business community regarding these eight. And we hope to have those, um, um, basically those survey results in another week or so. And so we would aim to have you make, um, decisions about which of these eight to advance at your next meeting. So in, in summary, the, the eight focus on doing more to what's called place making. And that is making a, a more inviting downtown area, whether that be through more benches, more pocket, pocket parks, if you will. Small public gathering spaces, um, and improve signage, improve parking and circulation. Um, so we don't have specifics on those in terms of where and how. That's what would need to happen in, in, in the next phase. Um, additionally, talk, one of the priorities that was identified was, um, public restrooms in the downtown area. Perhaps developing some off-season events to draw more people into the village. Particularly during the winter time when, when business tends to be much slower. And another possibility is, is that was mentioned and identified as sharing a, for a short period of time, a couple of years, um, an economic development project manager for the two towns. All of these projects are potentially eligible using the ARPA money that both towns have received. Um, part of the, uh, category of use for ARPA money is economic development recovering from the pandemic. So it's possible to use some of those dollars. There are some additional technical assistance grants that the town, that, that the state is offering towns. Once we've identified, as I said, two or three out of this list of eight. So again, the goal tonight is, is basically to introduce you to these. If you haven't seen them already, there is a lengthy report that the, that the committee and the consultants have put together that is available, um, on the website. I believe I sent you that link. And you're welcome obviously to, to read more in depth. Um, and the goal would be at your meeting on the fifteenth, we would present some additional, um, preferences that the business community has expressed. And then look, look to you to move forward on, like I say, two or three of these to the next phase.
I have a question about. Oh, sorry, Anne hit her.
Anne.
Um, I just wondered what role the downtown improvement group has in this. It seems to me this falls squarely in their territory, much more so than us.
Right, so they've, uh, members, um, of the committee have been involved during the process. Um, I think they've identified, um, public restrooms and, uh, continuing on the phase two of of the sidewalk and lighting improvement is, is their top priorities.
Jeff, if I may.
Go ahead, Becky.
Um, Anne, they, they definitely were involved with this. There was a, a, a good collaboration from a number of boards and committees and, and, and volunteers from the town. So I, I, it's, it's, it was really, I think, well-designed and, and orchestrated. And, and the report is really pretty interesting. I think it's got some real, very good ideas. Um, anyway, I look forward to getting it forward, but they definitely were involved. I, I understand that they were involved. I would think we would want their recommendation as a board, not just the fact that some of them had were attending meetings. Well, I think that, that the recommendations are coming from the research that was done. So, so, um, their input was taken, but it's, I think, to a much broader perspective than what the downtown improvement has done in the past.
Um, Jeff, yeah, I, 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 I agree with Anne's comment. Maybe we can get a note from or some sort of a memo from the Downtown Improvement Association about their thoughts on this, uh, this list. Can we get something like that in the next week or two?
Well, they're asking for us to have our own recommendations.
Independent of them?
Two weeks from tonight. No. That the, uh, that the, uh, rapid recovery plan uh, task force or committee.
Okay.
Is asking for our, our recommendations for two weeks from tonight. Yes, Becky.
Um, I was on this group. And again, um, if, if it, the report goes into a lot of breadth and depth um, in terms of, um, information they had access to, to come up with this report, which I think is about a hundred and thirty-seven pages. But it's, it's pretty compelling reading. And I think that, that um, the information provided to us really does go in a lot of ways beyond what the, the I would say level of expertise of downtown improvement has. They offer certainly a huge amount, but this goes far beyond their collective capabilities. I'm not saying don't get their input. I'm just saying this is a much bigger picture.
So I'll, I'll circle back to, to the dip and, and, and see what additional comments they may have. Happy to do that. Um, I think Becky's correct that, that the scope of this work is, is broader than, than, than what dip tends to focus on. Dip is really focusing on the streetscape, um, sidewalks and lighting and, and parking. Um, and this, this goes beyond that. Um, but there's certainly lots of overlap.
Jeff, may I ask you a question?
You may, Eli.
So one of the items was, um, related to, well, it's titled developing a shared branding and marketing program. And it was observed in there the K Pan Chamber of Commerce does uh, activities along these lines. In fact, um, a lot of the, the stuff that's cited in that section is in fact what, uh, Chamber of Commerce, um, often does. Although this item actually seemed to bridge over multiple, um, commerce interest groups, uh, within town. Question is, is it the intent of this item that we would be duplicating those efforts? Because it also said the Cape Baron Chamber of Commerce didn't, uh, they applied for a grant. They got a grant, but they still don't have the capacity, which implied, I think that's roughly what they said. Um, to do what's envisioned in this plan. Is it the thinking that I, I, and is, is it the idea of this plan that we would somehow reproduce some of the efforts of those other groups? Or, uh, find some means of funding those groups? What's, what's the concept here?
So in terms of branding, marketing, it may well be that you could, that you could partner with the K Pan Chamber and build on some of their programs and, and make it a little more in, in-depth and specific for, for Manchester. So that's, that's certainly a possibility. I mean, they are, they, the chamber are certainly open to those discussions and, and to work through how that might look and operate on the ground.
In the document that you gave us regarding ARPA funds, correct? There's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for an economic development coordinator. Time limited, two and a half years of a shared salary. Is that the same as number eight?
Yes, correct.
And so the shared salary is shared with Essex?
Correct, that was the, that was the concept, yes.
Okay, and what portion of that salary would each town be taking on?
Yeah, I saw it as a fifty-fifty split for both salary and benefits.
If I may, Jeff?
Yes, Becky.
The, the point of the shared economic development project manager is that there were a number of commonalities between Essex and Manchester. And if we worked in conjunction, it would be done in a way that we're not competing. And enhancing one from the other, because the studies showed, you know, five-minute drive times from the center of town, ten fifteen, and what, what services were obtained within those distance of travel. So I think the point of the shared short-term economic development project manager was to have us working in conjunction to further each town's strengths without causing competition. Is that what you got, Greg?
Yes, yes. And it well could be that we contract that out to a chamber employee and try to, again, make sure that there are good coordination and synergies with what the chamber's doing.
And I believe the chamber was interested in that, weren't they?
Yes.
Yeah, that's like we, that.
So again, these are concepts that you know, need to be flushed out in a lot more detail. But that would be, that's what the next phase would allow us to do. So we would pick, like I said, two or three of these to try to drill down deeper on them and to finalize the planning and then, and then to move forward.
Okay, any other comments from the board of selection? Any public comment? One of my concerns is that, and it's the nature of the beast, is that a lot of these have a high degree of overlap. And in picking out priorities, that's asking us to put boundaries around that overlap. I don't know that we can do all this in two weeks and do the town meeting and do everything else we're doing. Is there a reason why they want high priority items? At short timeframe?
The deadline we have, it's not a, not a make or break. But the state is offering some additional technical assistance in advancing your projects, but if we need to, we should take the time we need.
State is offering technical assistance in advancing the projects and that that money might be taken up by other towns? Is that the concern?
Right, exactly. But you, you need to be comfortable with your decisions and, and you know, our timeline needs to be our timeline, so.
Any other board members want to comment on the timeframe that we're being asked to respond?
It was a big packet to read.
It's a very big packet, particularly.
Was expecting you to read all of it for tonight.
Particularly, particularly getting that as close to the time of our meeting as it came. Okay, so we will do our best to see if we can accomplish the target of November fifteenth to have recommendations on two or three of the priorities of the board's selection. Anything else on this item? Okay, let's move on. COVID update. We're kind of kind of in a tough position on this one because Board of Health did not get a chance to meet last Thursday because of concerns about the power outage and ability of people to attend that meeting. But Greg, do you want to present your concerns about this particular update?
Sure, so I think, you know, we're we're in this position here where we continue to have the mask mandate. You're getting pushed back from some members of the public. The business community is starting to grow a little more concerned about its impact on their business, that people may be visiting businesses and other communities. It's hard to document that, but but people are, businesses in town are starting to say that they're seeing the drop in their, in their business, you know, year to year. So there are some concerns. The game changer may be that the younger children, the five to eleven-year-olds, hopefully starting next week, we'll have to wait and see. But it appears that the green light will be given for children in that age bracket, they can start getting vaccinated as well, which has been a concern and a reason for having the mask mandate. So it's, it seems like the, the environment is changing a bit in favor of not requiring the mandate, the mask mandate at this point. But there, you know, there's, you know, I'll do a one-eighty on you. You know, there's another study that said if everyone wears a mask between now and February, over fifty thousand fewer people will die. So masks do make a difference. And because we, we have a large population, not particularly in our area, but there's a population out there that is not getting vaccinated. So that's the conundrum we're in. The Board of Health, as I say, as you indicated, Jeff, they were not able to meet. And I think that would have been helpful to have some additional input from them. And and perhaps that meeting can be, can be set up again in the near future.
When does the Board of Health have their next meeting? I know that they have their regularly scheduled meetings on the second and fourth Thursdays of the month. And the second and the fourth Thursdays of the month are legal holidays. So do you know when they're meeting, they're planning to meet next?
Yeah, I meant to check in with Ellen today. And we didn't connect, so I'm not sure when their next meeting is. I was hoping that they were going to reschedule for this Thursday. I was not able to confirm that.
Okay. And we also need to be clear that in conversations with the Board of Health at this point in time, that the mask mandate is not ours to rescind. That's, that's the policy of the Board of Health to extend or rescind. I'm concerned about making these kinds of decisions on hearsay. And if there is evidence in the business community, year over year, meaning October of 2020 as compared to October of 2021, a drop in revenue. That would be very important information to have. But there's also the issues of we're not going down and staying down in terms of our case counts. We have a very low set of new cases that come in. We've gone down to zero in the last two months today since we implemented this mandate. And then it bounces back up to three, four, as many as five, six cases, active cases. I think that it's critical that we know that there's approval for children five to eleven. Since that's, that's a substantial portion of our population that has, obviously for medical reasons at this point, no, no vaccine. So if that's approved, that's great. And then to see how participation goes with getting those vaccinations. So I, I'm a little bit wary both for the reasons of authority over the mask mandate, but in terms of a board of selectmen recommendation or urging to the Board of Health of jumping the gun on recommending to rescind the mandate. I know there's pressure and I'd like to see, I'd like to see the facts behind the pressure and not just statements. I know there's pressure from organizations that aren't businesses to do this because of events that are coming up around the holidays. The pressure will always be there, but the reasons for the policy exist in some large measure because of the vaccination availability to young people in our community.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the observation that the Board of Health did in fact compose a letter articulating in great details thought process behind the mandate. It was their intent that that would be published in the Cricket and generally publicly available. But my understanding is that, for whatever reason, it didn't make it into the Cricket this week. And that they are still aiming to get that out there to the public. So I think that, given the fact they didn't manage to meet last week and discuss this because of the storm, and given the fact that their public statement hasn't got before the public yet, I think that we should just push this out until they've got their message, managed to get their message out and had enough tuning in me to get.
Okay.
Jeff, if I may, just a comment. I agree with Eli's comments. I think we all saw the note, I think, that was sent sent to the selectmen, but is going to be published. And I am curious how the public will react to it. A lot of the information there was kind of qualitative rather than quantitative. I am curious about how the Board of Health will react to the expectation that younger children will, are expected to be vaccinated in the coming, in the coming few weeks. And that that will be a, a hard point that they will look at in terms of their determination as to how they're going to manage the mask mandate going forward. But Manchester continues to be kind of an island all by itself out here and largely on the North Shore with regards to its practices. And that's a challenge, certainly for businesses. Not necessarily for most, most residents, but it certainly is for businesses.
I don't know that I would totally agree with your characterization of the statement that the Board of Health has made was subjective rather than objective. They, they provided some figures and facts, many, many figures and facts in that statement, so.
Mostly qualitative. I didn't say it was subjective. There was one figure, eighty percent.
There were others. Forty percent of Manchester residents remain highly vulnerable to infection. That includes children who are below vaccination age. A lot of the statement was about children. So but I, I agree that we need to have them take the step of publishing that letter. Bringing it out before the public so that the public can understand where they're coming from. Before I would be willing to, to say that we've handicapped our businesses. I would like to see some data that says that that's in fact the case. Business drops off at this time of year. We have fewer visitors coming to town. And I would strongly urge people in town to support our local restaurants and businesses. But I, I'd like to see the data on changes in revenue. To understand that better. Not saying it hasn't happened, I'd just like to see it.
Jeff, if I may?
Go ahead, Becky.
I think one of the things pointed out in the communication also was just the myriad hours put into researching and, and rereading and reconfirming data that the Board of Health then pours over. This is not easy or a popularity contest. But I, obviously, I, I know that it's a very difficult decision for them. But if it were up to me and I had to say, all right, am I going to pick between a child and revenue? That would be pretty simple. But I don't have the overhead that the businesses do. I just want to say I support the Board of Health.
Any other comments or concerns, questions about the COVID update? Okay, I will be in touch with the Chair of the Board of Health to find out when their next meeting is going to be and and how they're going to deal with the disruption of the regular schedule with the holidays.
Jeff, would you share that information?
Jeff, would you share that information with the rest of us?
I will definitely share with the rest of you. Talk to Paula in the morning. Okay. We're coming closer to our agenda schedule now. The next item is the Water Resources Protection Task Force. And Greg has a number of comments in his memo to us. Why don't you go ahead with that, Greg?
Sure. So again, recall history here. Back in eighty nine, I believe it was, town meeting voted to establish the Water Resources Protection Committee and charged that committee to study, recommend and implement steps to protect the town's water resources. That work was was done in the early nineties, a water resources comprehensive water resources report and analysis was completed. Various new zoning regulations were adopted based on recommendations in that report. It's it just looking at history, it seems like then the the committee stopped stopped its work. I think it felt that it had completed its its mandate. And and fell silent. And it's been that way since since the mid nineties. No, no formal vote that we can see was taken to disband the committee. Though I think it's reasonable to assume that the committee had completed its work. Obviously, there's renewed interest in in water resource protection. And that would makes, I think, some sense to to put more energy into our water resources protection efforts. And one way to do that would be to take up a suggestion that the Conservation Commission is offering. Also supported by the Open Space Committee. And that is for a subcommittee to form under one of the auspices of the Conservation Commission. I think it'd be wise to have that subcommittee have members beyond the Conservation Commission. One or two CONCON members and then members from other committees and members at large to help out. So what would the task force do? They would basically review that work that was done in the nineties. Perhaps propose an update to that comprehensive study that was done. And then to perhaps recommend further, whether they be regulatory measures or other measures that could be taken to make sure that we are doing the wise things for our water resources in town. So the recommendation to you is that you support the creation of the task force and that perhaps one or two of you work with with Steve and flushing out a few more details on the composition and the in the charge of the task force. But that's something that we could then approve more formally at a subsequent meeting. Tonight is an opportunity to discuss it and see what your thoughts are about moving forward.
I'd like to just add to Greg's comments that in the town meeting authorization for the Water Resources Protection Committee back in nineteen eighty nine, there was a composition to that committee in terms of who the representation, where the representation would come from. And that could be a guideline for this task force as well. Any comments on this? This is this is a very important issue in our town right now and certainly with the zoning board taking up the application of SLV again, water resources are a very critical aspect of the concerns about the SLV project. So members of the board with this idea of organizing a task force proposal, it will require some funding.
Jeff?
Yes.
My support would be very much contingent on the the charge and the composition of the tax task force. I'd certainly wouldn't mind being involved in discussions with Steve Gang along with another board member at least related to that. I support the concept. I have concerns.
Jeff, if I may.
Go ahead, Becky.
I would be very happy to be involved with that. I think that, as you said, we have some critical aspects to our water resources coming up in a number of areas. But I I too have questions about the composition and additionally it as an independent task force previously. Its organization, it would fall under CONCON this way, correct?
I it would be task force slash subcommittee coordinated by COMCOM, yes.
Yeah, I would, I would. I think I I agree with Eli.
You agree with Eli that you have concerns?
Yes, but I I I think it's incredibly important. I would like I would like to see this actually happen and I'm happy to be involved unless somebody else would like to be with Eli.
And Jeff, I'll I'll just make a quick comment. It's been thirty years. This task force was formed in eighty nine and I guess was kind of finished its work in the early nineties and then nothing has been done. Thirty years is a long time for, you know, evolution in terms of what's happened with all the environment and all of the area where our we've been sourcing water and we've certainly taken a lot of water out of that, out of that space in the past thirty years. So I'm I'm fully behind the task force and I'm happy to contribute as well if needed.
Okay. Anne?
I would have a great deal, it'd be a great deal easier for me to follow this if I knew what the concerns were. Having concerns is is certainly an appropriate thing, but what are they? What are you afraid might happen?
I think that the the charge which would be the statement of concerns or the statement of of goals to address is related to the adequacy of our water supply to provide for the needs of the town looking forward into the future. The threats to our water supply by development, both in terms of well, the threats to our water supply by development and there's there's various pressures in that regard. The resilience of our water distribution system. And we've been working hard on that one. And threats of contamination within our system from the sewer system, which we've also been working on. So those are some of the areas that my understanding is that that the concerns have been raised and 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 with the primary one being with the projected development in the community. What what areas are we most concerned about in terms of adequacy of water supply? Are we going to have inadequate water supply? That's the one that's been raised to me the most often.
I I'm sorry, I apparently misunderstood what other people were saying. I thought they were. I thought that Eli was suggesting that he had concerns about what the actions of the committee might produce rather than that there might be threats. I'm sorry.
I understood your question to be what what is this committee concerned about? What are the concerns? But you're you're asking the concerns that Eli and Becky are raising and not articulating?
That was my concern.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So I think the alternative, if you want to consider an alternative is is to basically constitute what the voters approved back in in eighty nine. If you want an independent committee then then constituted the way it was constituted under the under the town meeting, that that is another option.
That that that's not an answer. What is the threat that this committee might pose to the town?
Jeff, if I may.
Becky?
I I don't have a concern and that that the committee would present a threat. My concern is really specifically what what will the charge or charges be? What are the goals? And I am Greg just said perhaps have it be what it was before as opposed to a subcommittee under CONCON. I I think it should function independently as it had in the past.
My other question is we had a very comprehensive report from the DPW recently on the state of the water and and wastewater projects. Why are we starting all over again?
Jeff, if I may?
What have you?
To John's point, thirty years has passed since work was done into this. There's been a considerable amount of blasting that's occurred. I I just and and very likely there are different. The mass DEP and DEP in general guidelines may have changed and how those would then impact us in terms of water resources protection. And and I would like to see that as a part of the goal of the task force. See what protections have become stronger and how we can apply those to our town.
Could we at least start from the DPW report?
Jeff, if I may for a comment? Okay.
I think where we need to start is what's the charge of this committee? The DPW report is certainly a significant contribution to the committee. But I think we need to look at what is the charge of the committee and in one conversation I've had with Steve Gang about this, he was suggesting that it would be an update on the previous report and recommendations of the Water Resources Committee. Bringing it in under as a task force under CONCON was at least in part to not go through the process of creating another town meeting article to create another commission.
Why would it require a town meeting article?
Well, there's been some comments that have been made just now about why wouldn't we just do it? You know, reconstitute the committee. The committee had a charge back in nineteen eighty nine. And that was a charge that was given by the town meeting. The understanding and interpretation of that charge has been that they were to produce recommendations, which they did in a report that was published, I believe, in nineteen ninety two, if I'm not mistaken. That ended the charge of that committee. So if the sense of the Board of Selectmen is that we want to reconstitute the committee, it would seem to me that that would have to happen through a town meeting article. Mr. Wilson is still here, looks like he's about to speak. But he would need to unmute himself. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. I I don't think it requires a town meeting vote to constitute this task force that's being discussed. But I do think that we should pay attention to the towns' general wetlands bylaw, which includes, let me just bring it back up. The purpose of this bylaw is to protect the wetlands, water resources, flood prone areas and adjoining upland areas in the town of Manchester by the sea. Including protection of public or private water supply, protection of groundwater supply, flood control, erosion and other things. So I I I think that the inclination, let me go back to the meeting to constitute this under the Conservation Commission, which is responsible for the enforcement and implementation of the general wetlands bylaw, makes a lot of sense.
Alan, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Conservation Commission did not exist in Manchester, Massachusetts in nineteen eighty nine.
Oh, that's not true. I was a member of the Conservation Commission. In, let's see, I'm not sure of the dates. I think it was before nineteen eighty nine.
Okay, if that's the case, why was this done as an article that created a separate committee or commission to study water resources if it was the purview of the Conservation Commission under the water, under the bylaw that you just read?
I I think that vote at town meeting may have preceded the adoption of that general wetlands bylaw.
Thank you.
I'm I I'm not sure of the dates, but I think that's right. And I I was not moderator in nineteen eighty nine, so I'm not completely aware of the history.
I I thought you were moderator from sixteen, what? I thought you've been moderator of this town for the last three hundred and seventy six years.
No, I I I only became moderator in the three hundred and fiftieth year. So so there there are three hundred and fifty years that preceded me.
Okay.
But but the the current wetlands bylaw, which was been revised since nineteen eighty nine, among other things, charges the Conservation Commission with responsibility for
Water Resources.
Water supply, water resources, groundwater. And so I think it and I'm speaking now, not really as moderator, just in as as a citizen and former member of the Conservation Commission, I think it would make sense to create this task force or sub, you know, committee within the Conservation Commission because ultimately they are under the bylaw of the body responsible for protecting water supply.
Okay. All right. I think, Greg, it would be helpful to, I I know that it's been circulated, but I think it might be helpful to recirculate the charge for the Water Resources Protection Committee from Water Resources Protection Committee from the town meeting back in. Nineteen eighty nine. And. And that might address some of the concerns that have been raised tonight by members of the board.
We confirm the votes and dates of. Conservation Commission and bylaws and that sort of thing as well.
Right, and and the composition. Yes. Okay, any other comments from the board? So. Are we? In agreement that the next steps are that Eli and and Becky will. Join forces with Steve Gang and. Other members of the Concom. To. Start to sketch out. What this task force will do. What its mandate will be, its charge will be, and what its composition will be. That's a question, folks.
Yes.
I'd like to see the supporting documentation that Greg's putting together.
And then.
And then I'll be better informed and be able to make a better decision.
And I'll just say that I'm I'm happy to assist with the history if that's useful. Like, I can't go back. The full three hundred and seventy five years, but. At at least thirty or so.
Okay. And the decision, Anne, that we're talking about. Is setting up the charge and composition of a task force. That will then be brought before annual town meeting.
No, not necessarily.
We have to go to annual town meeting for funding.
Yeah, that's different.
Yeah, I I I think the the creation of the task force does not go to town meeting. It does need to be included in a budget article somewhere. Uh but I I. Given, given the the recent history, I I think it it would not be necessary to take it to the annual town meeting.
So the decision that the board would need to make, the Board of Selectmen would need to make. Is what is the composition and charge of this committee? Correct?
Jeff, is the is the is the creation of the task force contingent on the funding or is the task force created and then, alright, let's see if we can get some money together? To execute a plan.
Unless we had available funds that we could access between now and then.
I mean, this is a, the funding activity is further down the road, I think.
So you could you could have the task force. Or you could formulate the task force, get them underway.
Right.
And one of the early tasks they may have is what resources do we need to carry out our work? And they may put forth a recommendation.
And would there be available funds prior to town meeting? Is it possible that there are available funds that the the task force could ask access to do the work that they need to do? So that we could proceed with the task force prior to town meeting, because I'm hearing we don't have to go to town meeting to create this task force. But if there's any money that's needed, we have to wait until July first.
So, well, first of all, town meeting could could approve some dollars prior, free up dollars prior to to July first. Even if we wait to annual. But to answer your question, there 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 are some dollars that could be available. There won't be a lot of dollars. I mean, you're not. You're not going to find fifty thousand dollars to hire a new consultant to redo the horse and wooden. Report, and I don't think that's what we're talking about in any case. But I do think there will be additional resources needed that we will want to budget. But we could also. Provide some support between now and and town meeting, annual town meeting.
Jeff, if I may. Um as this comes under, it's a subcommittee under Concom, would would that have to go into a Concom budget? Or through Concom's budget?
That'd be a logical place, yes.
Okay. So to reach. An understanding of where we're headed, what our next steps are. Anne's asking to wait until our next meeting when she's had an opportunity to review some of the documentation that she's requested. And I I understand that request. Is there any objection to that? Do other members of the board feel like this needs to move forward more more quickly?
No, I don't think there's a sense, Jeff, if I may, I don't think there's a sense of urgency. I'm 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 confident that Becky and Eli, regardless of what. That information is are certainly capable of dealing with that and and moving things along, but. Uh waiting to see what the story is, is, I think, okay.
Okay, so, but I think that in between now and then, Becky and Eli could be in touch with. Steve and the people in the Concom about. What their understanding, what of the scope of this committee is. Is that reasonable?
I think so.
Yes.
Is that acceptable to you, Anne?
I certainly wouldn't want to keep either Eli or Becky from talking to anyone they want.
And I think it's good to. Have more information to work from.
But that would also allow them to come back to us if they can. Make those connections between now and the fifteenth to talk a little bit about what they found out.
More information is better.
Is that reasonable, Eli?
Yeah.
Becky?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, Christine, you've been very patient. What what would you like to?
I actually have a special interest in water and I do pay attention and try and follow as much information as I can. So on this particular issue, my understanding is that there was a Mr. Thomas Walker. That was in charge of this and was very passionate about it and he passed. And once he passed. This committee fell to the wayside. So that's my understanding. Um but then there's another EPA. Document, there was a case study and it's dated in nineteen ninety two that I think you all should take a look at. And then also take a look at other communities such as Tisbury, Dover, Situate that have water resource committees. And there are scholarly articles out there why there is a water resource committee that is separate from. The Conservation Commission, and it's because things come in front of the Conservation Commission and there's a conflict. If you're trying to protect the water as a whole. Um things that come before you, you're you may not be able to be partial. And the other thing I wanted to bring your attention to is that Brad Hill, before he was appointed to the Gaming Commission and Bruce Tar. Are working adamantly about. Working with these water resource committees and taking committee members and working together to work as a region. So, um, these are important issues. This is an important committee and. Um I would really like to see the two charges compared and why we would need to move it if if this initial. Committee was there for a purpose. I think it was an independent purpose. Um not to be under the Conservation Commission. So I would like to see some of these other documentations. Um like some members had suggested before going forward with a subcommittee. Thank you.
Okay, um I think that some of the things that impact. The frame that you were just putting on that are that. The bylaw that Alan was quoting from. Clearly puts this in the wheelhouse of the Conservation Commission. Um I'm not sure what you were trying to indicate by saying there was a conflict of interest between. Water resource protection and the matters that the Conservation Commission has to deal with on a meeting to meeting basis.
Could I explain? I think if a project is before the board. They they have to decide on that particular project. The whole serp- this whole purpose of the Water Resource Commission is just to protect water, not to approve projects. So there is an underlying difference. That's all I was trying to make.
Well. I understand what you're saying, but they have to do, they have to look at each project on the merits of the project. But they can also be developing a broader. Along with the other members of a task force. Or or subcommittee, a broader. Set of understandings of water policy and water resources as we want to. As they should be protected in this town. So I I don't see them as incompatible or conflict of interest.
I'd be happy to share some articles that would explain it better, probably in detail.
That's fine. Go ahead and share the articles and I'll distribute them to the board. But I I don't see the charges being, the the movement of this into the Conservation Commission as being. A conflict of interest necessarily. So. I'm gonna move on, unless there's an objection. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the American Recovery Plan Act Funds, the ARPA Funds. And project discussion. And Greg has provided. A spreadsheet in terms of some suggestions for the use of these funds. Greg, do you want to make some comments on that?
Sure, thank you, Jeff. So, again, we are receiving about one point five million in the in. In the allocation from the American Rescue Plan. We've received about half of those dollars and it's available to us. We have about a three year window to spend the total amount. There are. Prescribed areas that the that the dollars can be spent. The any pandemic related expenses. Whether it be public health hours, public nurse hours, PPE, et cetera. Can be used for economic recovery. To help businesses bounce back from the pandemic. It can be used for. Infrastructure, water and sewer projects and broadband. So those are the broad categories. That ARPA dollars can be used. They can also be used sort of a general catchall category if 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 our rev- if our revenues decline. Because of COVID. And then we can use those ARPA dollars to. Replace those lost revenues and use them for general government purposes. So for us, our biggest loss revenue was was really at the beach. When we were close to the to the general public outside of town. Certainly, our revenues from the beach were significantly lower. To the tune of about two hundred plus thousand dollars. And so that's a a fifth category that we could utilize. So that's the context for the ARPA dollars. In general, we have been kicking in broad terms, thinking that the the majority of the dollars would go towards. DPW projects on the infrastructure front. And when we think about the DPW efforts. Um we think strategically, it might make a lot of sense to focus on design work, getting projects ready. For construction in the hopes that there will be a pretty significant infrastructure bill. Passed at the federal level. Um and also that some of the state money that some of the ARPA money the state has received. The state legislators are also most likely to increase funding for infrastructure projects. So that. That we would be ready then to potentially tap into to those infrastructure dollars with projects that are ready to go, which is what they'll be looking to fund. So in in broad strokes, thinking, you know, in the five hundred thousand range for non-DPW. In in roughly a million in in DPW. Focused areas. Nothing magical to that, but that's just an area that, sort of a general construct that. That we as staff have been operating under. And so the list before you that I put together. Shows about a million dollars going for DPW. Little more than half of that going toward. A number of. Design efforts. In particular, the second phase of the downtown improvement project, so the. Central Street and Union Street sidewalk lighting. Improvements to get that designed and and ready to to go to construction, which we would hope to get funding for. Another engineering effort would be on the school street. That project is slated. To be the the water line at School Street is slated to be replaced. And so again, we would put dollars into that to to move that ahead a bit. In order for it to be ready, potentially for, again, construction dollars coming down the pipe. And similarly, third major design effort is. Trying to create some more loops in our system. So. From basically Forest Street eastward. All along summer, that's basically a dead end pipe all the way up to to Raymond. And so we don't, anytime we have a break. Along that, everyone is out. So there is a desire, long term, to to generate some some loop systems. And to help out on that eastern end of town. And the the first loop. Would be sort of backgoing to Plum Hill and coming down on the summer. So Ancient County Way extending through the woods over over to Plum Hill and then down to Summer. Would provide a bypass then, if anything were to happen from forest out to to Plum Hill. Some additional loops that would be good, but that that's one of, that would be one that we can proceed with. And then. Continuing on the list in terms of infrastructure, the the water plant SCADA system, that is the computer. Over the wire, if you will, Wi-Fi red. System that monitors our plant operations and ties into both the tank and the in the well. The system is original to the plant and has really gone past its useful life. No longer supported the system we have and is need of a of a of a replacement. So that's a fairly expensive item all in, it's about three hundred and forty thousand dollars to do that project. And then to to other smaller projects, one is a mixing paddle for the water tank, the Moses Hill Water Tank. It it best to. Stir up that water so that doesn't settle and stratify. So to better water quality to ensure that it is remain mixed. And then. Replacing the large water meters at the water plant. Again, I believe those are original to the plant and we have some concerns that they are not reading accurately. And just the reliability. So about a hundred thousand for those two projects. So what I just went through, those four, five, sorry, five items, total about six hundred, just under six hundred and fifty thousand. And that would leave another four hundred and fifty thousand that we could use to adjust to a construction of of some of the the pipe replacement work. That we would then hopefully supplement with some of either town town funds or additional grant money. If some of that infrastructure money becomes available. So for the remaining roughly five hundred thousand. Again, indicating some various uses and and these are suggestions. About fifty thousand for COVID related expenses. Most of that is added hours in in the Board of Health. Over the over the few years here, a couple, couple of years. And then if if you felt that the Economic Development Director. And then if if you felt that the Economic Development Director was something you wanted to support. That is shown at 125 for a two-and-a-half-year contribution for that position. And then if you were to decide that the the wayfinding master planning effort. Was a task, showing 25,000 dollars for that. And then for implementing the various recommendations that come out of the wayfinding and place making, combining those two efforts. Put in 50,000. And then, so that totals 350, those items I just reviewed. And then I have another 150,000 for various climate resiliency efforts. As part of my report later this evening, I'll talk a bit about some of the activities that are underway with Cape Town with the four communities. We can support some of that effort. And we could also then have about 100, so about 15,000 dollars to support some of the studies that are getting underway. And then reserving about 135,000 for implementing some of the recommended projects or advancing. Some of the the recommended projects for for Manchester. I certainly expect one of the most critical areas is how do we protect our our village core. Certainly, the, you know, at Reed in in Moscow, that's all title fill land. And the ocean is gonna wanna reclaim that area. So we need to start thinking pretty seriously on how we address that. Not that we need to do it tomorrow, but we need to start thinking about what our solutions might look like. So that's what I would see, those dollars doing is helping to advance solutions to how we protect our village area from. From the flooding that we may well experience down the road. So that totals just under 1.5, that list of issues, list of projects. And is a, is up for discussion.
A question, Greg, Jeff. So I I understand that the guidelines for all of this are that they should be, that these funds should be spent on. Projects or things that would be addition to what we normally do. And I think a number of these projects seem that, but not necessarily all. Are they all gonna meet the criteria, or will we describe them such that they will, or? Because it seems to me some of this pipe replacement or pipe engineering is stuff that, it's in our drawing, it's it's on our drawing board somewhere.
You you're right, they are on the drawing board. This is an accelerated plan for them. So I think that. That would be our argument, that there is plenty of other projects.
Oh, I'm I'm sure you can fill in the blanks, but.
Right, yeah. So I I'm optimistic that 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 the, that the. That the water projects themselves will will qualify.
Greg, the water plant SCADA system replacement Zen. Hardware and software control systems included in that, or is that just software?
I believe it's hardware and software. Chuck is on the line, I think he's nodding yes, but he can, he can fill in details.
Yes, it definitely is both hard- hardware and software on both ends of that.
Including all the remote access components?
Correct.
And I think if I'm correct, Chuck, that there's a pretty significant cybersecurity element of that as well.
Yeah, so we actually have just completed our emergency response plan as well as the. AWIA acronym, I forget what, Infrastructure Act that was passed, which had a. I guess a nod to cybersecurity, and so this will address all of that, all of those issues.
Yeah, hopefully more than not, but yeah.
Chuck, was this, was this SCADA system on the horizon in terms of? Capital expense?
So yes and no, I, to be honest with you, I haven't gone back and looked to see where it was in the, you know, the. Basically, under Carol, three or four years ago, they did a analysis of the. Capital planning coming up for the treatment plan itself, in addition to the distribution system. And I don't remember where this was on that plan, but. We have, since I've been here, had panels that have failed and we can't get parts for them anymore. So it really is kind of a shoestring fix whenever one goes down. So it, you know, it definitely has jumped up on to my priority list in the past 18 months. So that's where it stands right now. This seemed like a good way to slide it in. It it has not been on any, you know, Greg's gonna talk about the budget, I'm sure, in the future, but. It has not been on my short-term, you know, five-year capital plan, so this is definitely accelerating for that. So timely.
I mean, clearly with panels failing and and the. Updating of the needs of the system itself in terms of security, et cetera. It's a, it's a necessary item. The question that I have is similar to the one that John raised. Which is. Would we be? Suggesting that this be done under CapEx for DPW in the regular budget process this year?
So like I said, it wasn't on my short-term capital plan, you know, probably, you know, all things being equal, it should have been. We do have, you know, I I won't go, we have an unassigned amount of money in each capital year. That goes to the plant and upgrades. So this would have basically eaten all that. Usually, I think Greg can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was like 260,000 last year. Under the water line item. And so this would essentially use that entire line item and then some. So I think it, you know, definitely passes the, you know, the small test or the first look test. That this is not something that we were, you know, certainly nothing we were planning in the short term, and if we did, it would have been, you know. Reactionary to of, you know, imminent failure, critical failure, not something, you know, putting it, you know, where it should be on the list.
And what about the water tank mixer and plant meter?
So the mixer is something.
Are they on your shortlist?
Uh, yeah, the mixer, so again, it it would have come out of my. You know, kind of unassigned, you know, it's not big enough to, on them, on its own, to be its own. Capital line item, but it would have certainly been something that we would have replaced. The mixer is not really that expensive. You know, relatively speaking, it's like 10 grand to buy it, and then probably another 10 or 20 grand to put it in. So it's it's something that I've been thinking about, it's not something that's necessarily required by DEP or by any, you know, we're not replacing one that's failing. It's something to try and get a little bit better water quality out of the tank. Right now, we have a first in, first out, so the water that goes into the tank is the first that comes out, so all the, all the water that's sitting up in the tank. You know, stays there longer unless we have a high, you know, high demand in the system. So this will basically make the water age, you know. Identical throughout the tank and. Fix that short-circuiting. So I'm hopeful that it'll have a water quality impact that we're not seeing right now in town. And the meters are something that's kind of been out there, something we should investigate and replace. I think it. Could certainly help our unaccounted-for water. So that's, that's why that is there.
But was that in the shortlist?
Again, not identified as such, but something that I was going to try and complete sooner rather than later.
Sure. Okay, thank you. I I guess that from my point of view, the, the. You know. If these projects, the DPW projects are all within the scope of the funding. And that we would not have been replacing them. Or. Developing the engineering plans for them. This year or next. That. That seems like an appropriate use of the infrastructure money. My concern is on the other category. Greg, help me to understand, the place find, place making, wayfinding, master plan at 25. Seems to be half the price for implementation, funds that you're putting into implementation. Of whatever comes out of that planning process. That seems like a really expensive planning process. For what you're gonna be spending to implement. Am I misunderstanding that?
Well, the, the implementation money is not implementing everything that plan will come up with, but it's a start. And what that, it's a. It's a beginning of the implementation. I don't necessarily present it as. Implementing everything that will come out of that plan.
But typically, planning money runs between 10 and 15% of a project cost. Correct?
Right, yes.
So if that was the case, then we're talking 250 to 350,000 dollars. To implement the measures of, of place making and wayfinder. That seems like a lot of money. I I've either, either one of these is is high, or the other one is not even beginning to address the implementation.
Jeff may ask a question?
Yeah, I'd like Greg first to respond to what I'm asking.
So so I think. I think it is, it's it's a down payment on on what the plan might recommend.
Okay.
Doing, doing additional. Parking in particular can. That can be expensive.
Doing additional parking? Is that what you said? Correct, yes. Becky?
Uh, it it was actually less of a question, more of a clarification. The initial, the 25,000 for the place making and wayfinding master plan, those are two separate things. So when you've got the place making projects at 50,000. That doesn't.
Yeah, I'm combining, I'm combining the two.
You are, so that's both place making and wayfinding? Wow. Okay. Thank you.
And again, this is, this is dependent on your further thinking and. And decision-making on the. The rapid recovery projects. So these are, these are placeholders. Depending on how you decide which of those eight you wanna really advance. So this, in particular, the bottom half in particular is is very much. Work in progress, depending on which of the rapid recovery projects you want to pursue.
Is the 50,000 you're saying is mostly added hours for COVID expense? Is that for vaccination clinics and things like that that have already been held? Or that may be held in the, in the near future?
Maybe held going forward. So we have received dollars, or CARES money.
That's what I thought.
So that has paid for what has happened in the past. So this is projecting for. Because CARES runs, CARES has run out, it it basically ended yesterday.
Okay, and how much money did we spend under CARES for BOH?
Oh, I don't have that separate. Boy, I'd have to look that up, Jeff. I'm not sure, I'd like to double check.
Okay.
Question, Jeff?
Sure, John.
Yeah, your last line in your, in your comments, some funds can be used to replace lost revenue and be put to general use. Is that to say monies that you might have spent associated with COVID? And you kind of retroactively deal with that in some way, or is this all gotta be money that is spent going forward?
Oh, right, so it's money spent that you spend going forward. What I was commenting is if we had lower revenues. For example, the beach, the beach revenue was lower, you could say, okay, I'm gonna take some of my 1.5 million. In ARPA money and and replace that lost revenue to spend going forward. General government expenses.
Okay, so it's retrospective in terms of losses, shall we say?
Correct, yes.
All right, I understand that.
So it became a, it became a way for the feds to give you a little bit of a catch-all and a little leeway from. The prescribed areas of expenditure.
Well, you, that, none of that is in your proposal, in the proposed funding here?
Well, so that's where that climate, so the climate resilience, basically, so the climate resiliency work. Doesn't fit within those prescribed categories, but it can fall under this category of. Lost revenues, yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, that 150,000 would be coming out of a budget request for this year. A regular.
Yeah, we we haven't budgeted for that.
I I'm just concerned about time bombs, which is that. We use a lot of this money to do planning. And then where do the funds come from to implement the plans that have been developed? I mean, you're saying, under climate resiliency, that the Voices Project, the planning aspect of that would be about 15,000, about 10%. Then there's the actual design of whatever the plans are. And then monies from that also being used to implement those designs?
Not out of this fund, no. So that's where you rely on, you know, the the state certainly is is. Indicating they're gonna put significantly more money into their coastal resilience grant program for projects and their. MVP program, municipal vulnerability program.
Municipal.
Vulnerability program, MVP. So we would, that in essence, would allow us to apply for those, those funds. For voters, you know, appropriate capital money for them, one or the other.
There's been some discussions about border health reorganization. Is any of that COVID expense money that you're setting aside? Any of that earmarked for that?
So yes, I think some of that reorg is is related to continued ongoing COVID response. So yes, that could help in that direction.
Okay.
Uh, Greg, could you expand on that a little bit? Board of Health Reorganization doesn't mean very much to me.
But we haven't had a board discussion yet with all of you. But there's discussions at the Board of Health level. About expanding the hours of both. Both staff members that they have, so. The health nurse, as well as. As well as their main administrative staff.
Uh, to answer your question, Anne, this would be an agenda item that I was considering bringing into the next meeting. Uh, because there have been some discussions with the board of health about. A plan to, um, reorganize. The way that they operate. Um, in line with certain aspects of state law that.
I feel like I'm going down a rabbit hole backward.
It's, it's a, it is a rabbit hole, and I don't want to get into the whole rabbit hole tonight.
But let's not discuss something that we can't discuss because we don't have any information.
Right, but you're, but what I'm saying is, this is something that will be coming up. At a board selectman meeting in the near, in the very near future.
So again, I presented you a very preliminary list, and some of these are placeholders for, for further discussion. I think the, the most solid list is, is what you see in DPW. Those are real needs that Chuck has, and he can, he can start spending those dollars tomorrow. Uh, some of those others, you know, they, they await further discussions. I, um. I, I am more anxious about, um, at least. Some of the, the regional resiliency project to help get that going, because I think that will be an important piece. I was going to talk a little bit about that under, under my, uh, my report.
Okay.
You got the final, final decision on that again next, next meeting. I'm not asking you to sign off on, on any of these second half items tonight.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right, let's, uh, let's move on, uh, to the consent agenda in which we have. The BOS meetings from October fourth, um, an updated park and recreation fee schedule. And, uh, a change in manager on liquor license for. For Callas. Any holds on the consent agenda? All right, can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Ms. Jakes and seconded by Mr. Round. Roll call vote, Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Jakes.
Yes.
Mr. Round.
Yes.
Mr. Bowlin.
Yes.
Mr. Biden, turn of votes, yes. Public notifications, um, this is a very. Complicated public notification, um, the. Private nonprofit, I'm not sure if it's a private nonprofit, but the nonprofit, uh, organization, uh, Safe Tobacco Trails and Water. Has submitted documentation for your consideration. And, uh, this has to do with the development of. Um, a fifty unit condominium development in, uh, the corner of Route twenty Essex Street and Tobacco Road in Hamilton. And its potential impacts on the aquifer. Uh, is a fifty unit development that will have its own. Uh, septic system and, um, there's various. Issues raised about. How that septic system. What the design of that septic system is and, um, how it may or may not have an impact on. Water supplies within Hamilton, but also on the shared water supply that we have. In Gravely Pond. So. Typically with public notifications, we just end it there. But I'd like to ask, um. Whether you've had an opportunity to review these documents that have been given to us. Um, in the form of the memo from Safe Tobacco Trails and Watershed. And what next steps, including, um. Having. A representative perhaps of our board meeting with. With Hamilton about these, this project. Um, or being a, a liaison to, to Hamilton project. Um, in their planning board.
Jeff, if I may. Do we know if, um, there's a planning board rep from Manchester? And I, I, I'm asking because would that be? I'm just wondering if someone from planning board or even CONCOM would be better suited to be a rep?
I do not know. Who from the planning board has been, I know Ron's been, um, in touch with Hamilton. But I do not know whether they have a specific rep who's working with. The impact of this project.
Hate to say it, but I'm happy to do it. Something that I am very interested in and concerned about.
I, I think what we're looking for in terms of board of selectmen is. A point person on the board, the board of selectmen. For information from. Our planning board, from our CONCOM and Hamilton's planning board regarding this project.
Happy to do that.
Okay, um. So the first question, of course, that you would want to find out is how we.
I can reach out to CONCOM, to Steve and Ron, and ask if they have a representative for these.
Any other board comments on this? Christina?
Oh, sorry, um, I just wanted to say there is not one, but I just wanted to throw in, and I must have missed the CONCOM. So the planning board and the CONCOM are meeting concurrently, meeting on things, so I just didn't want you to miss the CONCOM part. I have been following it. Thank you.
The, the planning board and the CONCOM.
And Hamilton are both meeting on this. They've had several meetings, so I didn't want the BOS.
I'm aware that they have been meeting.
The first part of the discussion that you said was just the planning board representatives, but yes, the Conservation Commission is also meeting.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm very aware that the Conservation Commission has also been involved in this. I'm sorry that I didn't include them in what I said. The. Okay, so Becky, you're going to get in touch with Ron and Steve and get the lay of the land for us and.
Yeah, and I'll reach out to Greg for a little more info too.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
Any? Let's see. Okay, Don Administrator's report, right?
Thank you, I'll be brief. Um, as you know, our, our budgeting process for FY twenty three is underway. Uh, department leaders are working on their proposals. Our goal is to then compile everything and have, try to meet with them and, um. Go over things that we present preliminary budgetable to you and the finance committee in, in early December. Given our, where our meetings are going, we may want to have that be a special meeting and then a regular meeting. And so that we have the time, uh, to have that initial presentation. But anyway, we can talk about that as December gets closer. Um, so it, my main point is that this is, um. This is the best time to be giving any initial thoughts or concerns or ideas that you have regarding the budget. Um, to, to convey those to me so that I can be working early in the process with department heads. So I just want to reiterate that, um, if you have, um, ideas about the budget. Uh, new directions or different, different services or different way to provide services. Et cetera. This is, um, this is when it's really helpful to have that information in this very early stage of developing the budget. Not that things can't change, they do. But the, the more time we have to work on some different approaches that you may have in mind, the better. So I'm just underscoring that, um, to have you, um, be in touch if you have ideas. I welcome those. On, on the forty B status, um. The, the ZBA had their first hearing last week. A little challenging towards the end with power going out. I know that I got kicked out pretty early because my power went out. Around eight o'clock, um, so I, I missed the bulk of the meeting. Uh, they, they were able to finish up the, the hearing, I'm sorry, they finished up that evening, certainly not finished up the hearing. There are many, many hearings to come. The ZBA did vote to submit a request for safe harbor to D H C D. Um, and so that request is, is being worked on with the town council's support. Um, and they'll be submitting that, that letter within the fifteen days that it's, uh, required from the opening of the hearing. Uh, we'll, we'll see, uh, what sort of response we get from D H C D. Are they also moving ahead? TBA is moving ahead. Um, they're, they'll be meeting again on the sixteenth of November. With a focus on choosing consultants to help with the various peer reviews that they would like done. Um, certainly in the areas of, of traffic, parking and circulation will be, uh, one major area. Natural resources impacts be another area. Civil engineering, geotechnical site plan. Issues and concerns. And then, um, architecture, design, aesthetics and landscaping. Those are sort of the four major buckets. Um, similar to. Similar to the concerns that, that you had identified when we were going through. The lit process. So that's where that stands and it'll continue, um, over the course of the next six months. Give you an update on, on climate resiliency efforts.
Greg, before you move off of forty B.
Yeah.
Has, uh, the MHA, um. Technical support person been assigned and is he up and running with the ZBA?
Yes.
Good.
Ezra Glenn is, is the name of the gentleman. Um, he was able to meet with, um. With, with Sarah as chair, Sarah Melis as chair of the ZBA and, um, provided some good guidance. Was that that first hearing?
Yes, he was at that hearing.
Been able to, um, to give some perspectives and, and help with the process. Um, subsequently, he has been on calls helping with peer review selection.
Okay.
And process. So yes, that's, that's underway.
Great. Come, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, moving on with climate resiliency, um, in the past, I've given you some information on, um. EPA building block program that is, um, getting a little bit of slow start, but it is underway. Uh, that is to look at a, a Cape Town region wide effort. To see how we can work together as, as a region and some of the, um, impacts that we will be facing. With, um, as, as the climate continues to change. And also underway right now is through, through some funding that, um. Certain Atari provided through the state budget as well as private fundraising. Um, the team from Harvard is looking at, uh, a number of areas. They're focusing on what they're calling the big storm, just graphically portraying the impacts of, uh. Sort of a middle range hurricane hitting, hitting Cape Anne. And what we can expect from that and kind of storm surge and damage that we will be. Um, confronted with should such a storm hit. And then in addition, that Harvard team is looking at, um, areas of, of. Options for fortifying some of our waterfront in the face of, of sea level rise and, and bigger storm surges. Uh, areas that are suitable for that and others that may not be suitable. And there may be areas where, um, we need to let the oceans come in. And so where are those areas and how can we best plan for that in the years ahead? Also looking at net zero housing construction codes, um, that, the, maybe an option for us. That we can adopt locally, um, assuming the state provides that, that local option, which they are likely to do. Another piece of, of the puzzle is making sure that the public, um, are residents and residents all of all Cape Anne. Are being heard and that we understand the values and, and the culture of, of our residents. And making sure that we are protecting what people value. Um, and so there's, um, a project that has been proposed. And we have a good chunk of funding from, from Gloucester, I'm using some of their ARPA funds, um, to two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, so this is the Voices for Climate Change. So this is an effort to, um, basically meet people where they are. To engage citizens on the street, to hear from them, what their concerns are. And to acknowledge those concerns and make sure that those concerns are being addressed in any planning and projects that go forward. So time and again, it's, it's been proven that, you know, without, without that ground. Ground swell or that grassroots support for projects, it's very hard to make projects happen. Um, and so the intent of this project is to tap into people's concerns, to understand them, to document them. And to make sure that the plans that we, um, advance are speaking to, to those concerns. And so this is a tieback into the ARPA fund spreadsheet. Um, so it's, uh, it's about a hundred thousand dollar effort. Which would include, again, uh, drawing out some researchers, uh, from Harvard. That basically immerse themselves in the community and meeting, you know, having the conversations at coffee shops and attending. You know, the, the social gatherings at, uh, the churches, et cetera, et cetera, just sort of fanning out into the community and, and meeting people where they are. Um, and, and documenting those concerns and then putting together, um. A, a freshly produced video that captures those concerns and ties them into. The impact that the analysis of the big storm shows. So there's a tie in between the Voices Project. And the, uh, building block project as well as, um, that Harvard research that has been, um. Has, has started. Um, so the idea is to have fifty thousand from, from Gloucester and then. Uh, smaller contributions from the three smaller towns, about fifteen thousand apiece to go towards, um. Go towards that effort. And so that's where, again, I'm tied back to the ARPA spreadsheet. Where I had that, uh, resiliency, private resiliency figure, um, hundred thirty five as a, as a, as a number. And fifteen of that would go towards this, this Voices Project. And, um, there, there's a more detailed write-up that I certainly happen to share with you. Uh, on the Voices Project and, um, I can get to that for next time and you can make a final decision at your next meeting.
Is that money both planning and implementation, or is it just planning?
The fifteen thousand is, is basically the study. So it's not, it's not implementation of projects, it's, it's identifying people's concerns and, and what their priorities are. And then from there, we would do. And once we know those priorities, start addressing those priority areas for solutions. So again, don't need a decision this evening, wanted to tee it up for you, give you the background and I'll provide, um. A more detailed description of that project, um, in preparation for your next meeting. So if you want me to move on, I'll move on to the last item, which is, um, yeah, uh, request for use of the town green. Um, I don't believe we've had a request for a public monor in, in the town in the past that I'm aware of. There is a new Habad, Ba'at of Cape Town. Which would like to erect a, a public menorah on, on the green during the eight days of Hanukkah. Which I believe are the 28th of November through the fourth or something, fourth of December, something like that. So this is Habad, they're based out of, bottom of Cape Town is basing Gloucester. So I don't know how you feel about responding to a request from a group out of town, but that. Request is, is before you. And again, don't need to make a final decision tonight. We can put it on the agenda as a formal item. For the 15th, but again, wanted to give you a heads up on it and. Let you know that it's coming.
Right. If I may, Jeff.
Sure, go ahead.
The town has a very long history of not putting religious symbols on the common. The friendship tree is a friendship tree and not a Christmas tree. And that goes back. 50 years. We don't have. Crushes on the common. I think that opening the common to a religious organization is a terrible idea. We don't have a policy on it, but we should.
Anne, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we have? A whole set of Christmas trees that were adopted by various businesses in town?
They were not Christmas trees. They were. Set as holiday treats.
Right. There was a distinction made there and, and also I seem to recall that there was a request processed by the board. A different board, but one that I was on. I don't remember how many years ago now. From one of the churches here asking to put up a published display and I think the board politely declined if I remember this correctly. Back and ask other board members. So we can certainly discuss it, but. I'm, I. Will support what Anne said that there is a history of us. Pushing back on that.
And Jeff, yeah, I have a question. I, I, I recall that, yes, I think it was First Parish Church that was turned down for some sort of a display, but that would have been, I don't know, 10 years or so ago.
It was, it was the, the living crush.
Okay, that, that's, yes, I think it was something like that. But independent of that. I would go back to the sponsor. I, I also have a concern that they're out of town. That's not to say that they don't have members that might be in town here. I don't know, but. To strengthen their position. For, for debate or discussion, they should have someone in town as kind of a co-sponsor.
That all depends on whether. The position of the board is that no religious displays on the common.
Yes.
Although.
Yeah.
I don't know what else to call what those trees were that were sponsored by various businesses other than Christmas trees.
They were not religious. They could have been. Oh God, what was the Norse holiday at? At, at the New Year's of that. This is a distinctly religious. And I don't think it's appropriate. I think it's inappropriate.
I agree. Christmas trees are pagan after all, right?
I always thought so.
But anyway, I, I think.
It just depends on what you're worshiping. Seriously, I mean, to say, say it's pagan and that means that it's not religious is not, is not an act.
Exactly. But I, I think the precedent is set not to have religious symbols there. And as John said, especially it's, you know, not from town, but that.
Yeah. So are we saying that? We don't want to wait until the 15th or?
I don't need to wait.
We should probably put, we should probably put this onto an agenda. Because this is part of town administrators report and it's only listed as use of town common. And it's a broader discussion. So I think we should put it on the agenda for the 15th. Okay. There's a matter that's not. On this agenda, but it is. A matter that's pressing on town boys and committees. And it's not included in your town administrator's report, Greg. And that is an update on the hybrid meeting technology.
So we did get the equipment, mostly equipment installed last week. To allow hybrid meeting in room five. We hope to have that training on that new equipment next week. And so that come, come in November. I'm anticipating we'll have the capability of having hybrid meetings where boards can meet in person.
Come mid-November like November 16th, because Sarah Malish is still here.
Yes. That would be a. That would be jumping in with both feet because that would be a large meeting, but.
But the intent of these meetings, these hybrid meetings. Is. Board members and. Those having business before the committee as opposed to the public and the public is on the hybrid end of it. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that the sense of this board?
Would it be possible for someone to attend, not a board member to attend in person and, and be heard?
That's, that's where we start to run into. It not being hybrid, but being an open meeting that anybody can attend. It is an open meeting that anybody can attend, but. Part of it Zoom. And the question is, or, or as a board, are we saying that what you're asking about Anne would not be possible? So maybe, well, not maybe, because we need to get. Clarity on this soon. We, we certainly should make this an agenda item in terms of what a hybrid meeting is. But my understanding, my understanding up to this point is that the hybrid nature of the meeting was that board members would be meeting in, in person. In, in town hall and any individual with business before the board. Such as someone petitioning the ZBA or someone. Having business before the Concom, et cetera. And that everyone else would be attending by zone. Am I, am I incorrect in that, Greg?
No, that, that, at, at least initially, that was my understanding as well. Obviously, when we can. Have people gathering in, in town hall, then the hybrid remain, you have the choice of coming. As a, as a. Spectator isn't the right word, but as, as a general public member wanting to attend, you can attend either in person or virtually. But for now, because of. Because we're still in, in the grips of the pandemic, that we would have at first just do. Board members and those with official business before. Before a board or committee. In order to limit the numbers that are gathering in person. In, in the meeting room.
The question, Anne, from my point of view is, we spent a lot of energy, a lot of time. Planning our annual town meeting to make it a safe gathering for people to participate in the business of the town. And if we open up town hall to the public attending meetings. I've been in meetings of prior to becoming a board member and as the board member when. The crowd spills out into the hallway outside of room five. Room five is not an adequate room for having a public meeting that's not. That is safe. In terms of public, public safety, public health safety. It's tough and, and, and I understand your question and, and wanting to open up the, the meeting to people who wanted to come in to make a comment.
I, my question was really more about the capability of the system. Than about the appropriateness of having a large audience in a pan, in pandemic. That's really two different issues. And, and as long as the system is capable of it, so that when and if we can actually gather. People can attend meetings. Out of interest rather than, than necessity. In person, but it sounds as if the system could handle that. It's just that we don't choose to do that now because of a pandemic.
Jeffrey.
Sarah.
So we have advertised our next CBA 40B meeting. With the members of the board in the 40, in the room four, five. And with members of public. On Zoom. And we also have a meeting of the ZBA on, I think the 16th. Which we planned to do the same thing. And my ZBA members really want to meet in person. And whatever it takes, we want. The. It to work. Greg is going to get it done for us.
It's not a board of selectmen meeting without hearing you laugh.
It's just like. It's just like super difficult to hold everything on Zoom.
Yeah, clearly. I think we've all felt that. But. I think that the board of selectmen. Has been. Operating on a general. Expectation about how this would run rather than setting a policy. Not, not a, not a policy like the ones we've been discussing, but. Having a vote to say, okay, the public's going to attend by a zone. And those with business and board members will be in present, in person.
So I believe that we have posted my. 1116 ZBA 40B meeting as a hybrid.
Yes. Okay, well.
We'll see how it works.
Well, you posted, you public notice for the 17th. Has gone in as a hybrid.
That's the ZBA regularly meeting, but the 16th?
I haven't posted that yet. You, we, all we, all we're putting is, that doesn't need a public notice. It just needs the agenda.
Okay.
We haven't done that agenda yet.
You need to tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's good. You guys figure that out. This is the board of selectmen meeting.
Sorry.
There, as much as you'd like to be an adjunct member of the board of selectmen. You've already got too many hats, so we're going to ask you to work that out with Gail. Thank you, Gail. Is there any other business that? That we need to attend to tonight that has not been intended to?
We should adjourn.
Is that a motion, Anne?
I moved to adjourn. That's the business that I think we are facing.
Second.
Move, moved by Ms. Harrison, seconded by Ms. Jakes. Roll call, any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Round.
Yes.
Ms. Jakes.
Yes, please.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Bowling.
Sure.
I take that as a yes, of chair vote, yes. It's unanimous. Good night, all.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you all.